If I can ask everybody to go ahead and have a seat, it's about nine o'clock, so we'll get started on time. Which would be the best segue for if your cellphone ringer is on, now would be a fabulous time to turn it off. I want to thank everybody for coming out this morning. And we're going to, go ahead and get started. My name is Jenny Kropor-Rines and I am the Chair of the Communications Committee, and we're sort of organizing these meetings. The committee is here this morning, as well as members of the board, to go through some questions that were emailed in and then audience questions. If we can, if I can have everyone stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag. Okay, we're gonna get started. Doug has a few comments to make and then we'll get right into the questions. So Doug?
Good morning, everyone. Thanks for taking the time out to attend this meeting. I wanted to start off on what I consider a high note. I'll share a story with you that a couple of weeks ago, I got a phone call from a husband and wife who had recently visited the Pines to attend a celebration of life ceremony over at the community center. And they said, Mr. Parks, we, you know, we had a wonderful time. The Ocean Pines is a really nice place, and they live out in Virginia. And he said, unfortunately, and it was actually kind of funny, they said they were arguing as they pulled into the parking lot about which parking place to take. And apparently it got to the, "Well, then, you know, you drive." Well, no, you know, and they, you know, it finally got squared away. Well, for some reason, she said she had taken her wedding rings off. She had an engagement ring and another band, put it on her lap, alright? Apparently, they got to talking, and she got out of the car, and they, you know, they parked, they went in, and then she realized she didn't have her rings. And so, you know, she recounted the story, went out to Chief Massey, they did some investigation, and they weren't really sure what was, what could have been, what could be done. So I called Chief Massey, "Hey, did you talk to these folks?" He says, "Yes, we did this. By the way, we actually think we have some video that we can look at and determine if, you know, we see anybody in that general area, maybe picking up the rings and so on and so forth." Well, to make a long story short, Chief Massey and his team were able to find the video, identify the individuals who, who had picked up the rings, not stealing them, just picked them up, and were actually able to contact that individual, got the rings, and got the rings sent back to those, to those folks. So it was, you know, it was a really, really nice thing to have, you know, the teamwork of the, so kudos to Chief Massey and his team. It was a really nice thing to start off with, and I know the folks that, that got their rings back said that, you know, it was really, really nice to have that kind of support from the folks in Ocean Pines. So it was a very, very nice thing, and I just want to, again, hats off to Chief Massey and the, and the Police Department for their hard work on that one, so. That's it. I just wanted to share that, and we can move on to business.
Okay. What we're gonna do this morning with the questions, the Communications Committee's kind of been working on the format of how we're doing these meetings, and this is the third one. And every time, we think we improve it a little. So this time, we're going to, last time, we just read all the emailed in questions first, and there wasn't quite enough time left at the end for the audience question. So what we're gonna do today, since I do have a handful of emailed in questions, we're gonna alternate. So we're gonna do one question from the audience, then one question from the emailed ones, and proceed in that way. We're gonna try to keep the remarks to three minutes, and we'll time it in case anything, so everyone has a chance to say what they want to say. We'll start with, Mr. Brodsky, did you want to start? I know that, that you have something prepared there that you'd like to say.
Alright. I'll just read this. This is to the OPA Board, as well as to all residents, with the fixed ideology of no new taxes. From Alan Brodsky, and I guess I should mention my lot number, Lot 06 hyphen 0032. The subject is, "Put on your thinking caps and consider the points below. One, $172 per year added onto today's annual fee is about 30 cents per week." Okay? Number two, in today's economy, how many of us keep our budgets within 30 cents per week? Three, you all have lived through inflation of a few percent a year in the USA. You all know that repairs, construction, and salaries have all gone up over the years. You all know that Frank Daley, NALI Board Member, not here today unfortunately, is he on the phone?
No.
He's not hearing this, huh?
No.
Has been working hard for a number of years for not only the infrastructure, but also for the top personnel, the sports, and all the other amenities that add more to the community value above all of our own properties, for all of our own properties. Six, you all know we have lost a general manager, John Bailey, who was picked as a top candidate for GM. Was it from 100 people, was it? I don't know, I can't remember how many. Because he was disgusted with the angry reaction by the membership, some of the membership, with no new taxes ideology, after he and Frank Daley had worked so hard over the year to compute the optimum budget, considering every budget item in detail. Seven, my plea to the OPA Board, I put this in dark letters, present the annual fee on a monthly basis and urgently set up monthly banking deductions or billings like other household expenses. Owners need to realize that their monthly premiums for living here are a bargain bargain for the ongoing property of this community. We will never have peace in the community until this is realized and this change is made, whether it's in the rules or whether, it's not in the rules, it needs to be changed. I've been here for 25 years, it's been that way, I've been saying the same thing.
Mr. Brodsky, is there a question in there?
My plea, let me finish the last two items.
Okay, because we're, you've exceeded the time.
My plea to OPA, OPA owners or renters, consider the points above. My plea to both, consider additional amenities that might require only small budget increases. And Karen McClure informed me, for example, I'm cutting this short, that the Ocean Pines players brought in profit to the community for a number of months when the community was first established. But before, but the lack of a stage over the years caused them to diminish. And I ask that the Ocean Pines players be considered for bringing back into the community, they're all volunteers, they work freely, and the additional stage would be a negligible cost compared to a building like this, but it was never put in.
Okay, well, thank you for your statement. Would any of you, okay, thank you. Let's go with the first question that we had emailed in.
Yeah, this one is from Mr. Walker. When will the financial audit be made public to the OPA membership? It's a multi-part question here, so I'll touch on all of them, we'll get through. If the audit determines that there was theft, mismanagement, and/or any other abnormality that caused the loss of funds on, or OPA assets, one, what is the total loss for the audit period, if any? Two, if there were losses, did the audit attempt to review prior years? Three, if the audit determines there was a defalcation, theft, mismanagement, and/or other, any other abnormality, will the OPA, one, seek financial restitution, two, prosecute the responsible parties, three, terminate employees associated with any mismanagement? Okay, and if the audit does determine that theft or mismanagement or any of the other abnormality that caused the loss of any form of OPA asset, what controls will the OPA institute, and who will have the oversight? Long drawn out, so I'll touch on a couple of things. Number one, the, the results of the audit are targeted for the end of April. And that's based on information that was given to Steve Phillips, who is heading up on the OPA side, that part of the investigation that was given from Gross Mendelson. Be advised, a couple of things. Number one, Gross Mendelson, who are the financial auditors that are doing this forensic audit, are working with WCBI, which is the Worcester County Bureau of Investigation, and they have been jointly working together to try to get some information. By design, none of the board members have been associated with that, so that it's, we're completely independent. So I don't have all the latest information, nor do I, nor the board require a status report on a regular basis, other than the ones that have been provided to Steve Phillips have been very general in nature. But the, the one item that I did want to mention, and Steve, and Steve had provided this to me, Steve Phillips, everybody knows is the Director of Finance here for Ocean Pines, okay? So they anticipate delivery of both audit reports, the finance cash and the public works. Now remember, there were two audits going on. One was the finance side of the house, and then we moved into Phase Two, which was the, you know, auditing public works. So they, they basically said they should be able to have that report ready by the end of April, okay? And, and, you know, that's it, what it takes. Now, the other question would be, you know, what's the total loss? Well, we don't know until we get the report, alright? Did we review prior years? Yes, they went back one year as per their accounting requirements. So they went back and said, when we do a forensic audit, we usually take the prior year and compare it to the current year and see if there's any abnormalities. But that's the most level detail I have, because clearly they are the experts in what's done as part of a forensic audit. The, if the audit determines that there was any, you know, either theft or other things, certainly OPA will take the necessary action on advice from our attorney about making sure we're compliant with all laws, rules, regulations, and governance associated with that. And so at this point, all I can say is that's what we will do. Do I have a definite answer that, yay, we'll do this if this happens? No, because it's, I'm not going to speculate. We're gonna wait until we get the facts, and then we'll get advice on the legal side, and then we'll take the necessary action. As far as controls go, refer back to, I think it was a year and a half ago, when we had our regular audit, not the forensic audit, but the regular audit. And one of the things that they did was a deep dive, and one of the many things that came out of that deep dive was a review of the business processes, the procedures, things that are associated with cash handling and transaction management. And John Viola was instrumental in getting all of those processes shored up, because there, and I don't want to use the wrong words, so John, correct me if I'm wrong, is, there were, it just wasn't as tight as it, as it should be. And so those things have already happened. Now, will other things potentially happen based on the results of the forensic audit? Possibly. Again, I can't predict that until we get the information back from the forensic audit. So, John, anything else?
Thank you, Doug. I just want to make a couple of points, and the membership needs to hear all this, to be assured. I was there two years ago. I don't report to any GM, I'm not behooving to any board or anything, I'm independent. I can tell you this, when Tom Herrick was President of the Board, there was complete cooperation and support once something came up. Total support and cooperation. Same thing with Dave Stevens was in charge of the Board. I received complete support and cooperation. Same thing with this Board and Doug Parks. Everything is being done properly. They have taken the measures that I requested a couple of years ago. And at this point, just be assured that they're doing everything possible, and there will be total transparency to the membership, I will assure you that.
Colette, did you want to hit on the part two of that person's question?
When OPA is making a presentation? Okay, this was a comment also from that person. Says, "When an OPA member is making a presentation to the Board, why do Board members continue to work on handheld devices?" why do Board members continue to work on handheld devices, laptops, and shuffle paperwork rather than focusing or listening to the presenter? This is an act of gross disrespect to any member of the OPA who makes any presentation before the Board of Directors. And I took this question because I'm an offender. I will admit that as Secretary of the Association, I like to record the names and the general topics that people are speaking of when they make public comments during our meetings, so that if there is reason to follow up later, I will have that recorded. I also know that the goal, sometimes our board packets are pretty thick, lots of paper, and we're trying to do as much paperless management of information as we can. And so a lot of times, we're referencing what's in the board packet during the meeting and during the comments. Also, I would say that there are times when the assertions that are made in comments are inconsistent with facts that are recorded in documents that are on the OPA website. And there are times when that discrepancy of information, we want to, you know, I know that I do. I've looked up on the web just to verify that my understanding of the facts as recorded in our documents is correct, even though what the person speaking may be saying is different. And then I think the other issue that comes up, I know I've sat next to colleagues, Ted Maroney, you know, today I'm sitting next to our treasurer. There are times when we want to research information, financial information, or RFP information, information that may speak, be related to the issues that are being spoken about. And then I think finally, what happens is that we're getting text messages from staff members sometimes when they're listening to the meeting, and they are either feeding us information that supplements what the speaker is talking about, and so it may, and then we also get text messages when the audio for the meeting is not adequate, and there are people that are informing us of that, or the video is not adequate. So I, we, I think I can speak for all of us, that we do not intend to disrespect the speakers or the membership. We're, you know, it's a lot of information that we're processing up here, and, you know, we're just trying to do our best to process information as efficiently as possible. So if anyone has offended, I certainly, you know, want to assure you the intention is not to offend, but to be able to handle the information in the best way possible.
Thank you. Can we take the next audience? If there's somebody, come on up. We're going to do the audience questions round robin, so if you have one, start thinking about, you know, next time the microphone's open.
Hi, Dick Neiman, I'm 45 Wood Duck. And I wanted to just make comment that, about the governance of Ocean Pines, and I seek to talk with some of you individuals to see if we could do something better than we've done in the past, in the sense that we, we don't have anything different than what we have in the United States today. We have the Congress, and they might say, I need something tomorrow, such as the Mueller report. And then you have the bureaucrats, i.e. our General Manager, that says, I can't turn the Washington Monument upside down in one day. Somehow, we keep hiring managers, and you all know as well as I do, you might pay them $150,000 a year, and then we get rid of them, and then we pay them another $75,000 to $100,000. So really, they're very, very expensive, they're getting well, well compensated. What I'm just hoping is that you guys can look into this. Every year, you may have one Board that looks at this candidate, the new General Manager, and says, they're excellent. One-third of those people change roughly every year. And then you got a Board where they have conflict. I'm just suggesting, and I can change this into a question if you'd like to. I'm suggesting that you all look at that situation and see if, sometimes, when I see the things that you put on the bureaucratic side, bureaucratic being the General Manager, that you expect things too quickly, too fast. And we always had a statement when I worked, you know, do you want it fast or do you want it good? And I know people are impatient, you all, some of you just have one more year to get something done, to say, look what we did. And I'm just hoping that you all, I'll ask the question, will you all look into the governance of this, and just look back and see over the last fifty years? We're not that little, small place we were. I don't say that we should become a municipality, no, I don't believe that. I think we all share in our assessments alike. In other words, I get the same police service as the poorest person or the richest person. But I really wish you would look at that governance and ask yourself a question. And I would hope that somehow that maybe we can, the next time if we're going to give somebody money when we terminate them, maybe we should do it the other way around. If we're not happy, you give it back or something. It's just, it doesn't make sense that in seventeen months, I used to supervise, and one of the things that I would do with an individual was, if the individuals got the basics, you know, in one year, they'll know about ninety percent of what they should be doing, the other ten percent has to come yet. We had a gentleman here that was seventeen months. I don't know what happened, I don't care at this point, the gentleman's gone. But every, I guess I give the curse of death, anytime I think we have a good manager, they go away. I think you'll have had good candidates, but to become the conflict of just how much does the Board have to do as elected officials versus the bureaucracy? So I said, would you look into that in your thought process? That's all, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any response?
Thanks, Dick. We actually are going to look into that, and we're in a position right now because we do not have a General Manager. We're looking at a couple of different options, possibly actually having an outside company provide, excuse me, management services, or retaining another General Manager. I think one of the things that you point out very accurately, we don't want to be turned into a municipality, but the reality is, we are a municipality in many ways. We have police and fire and public works and many things. So we have to be careful in selecting anyone that we put in as General Manager to make sure they have the experience to be a General Manager over a small city, not just an HOA.
And then I'll add something from the HR perspective. As the liaison for HR functions under the transition management team, I've been looking into our HR practices, and one of the, you know, we acknowledge the concern about stability in decision-making with respect to these issues. And one of the things that I would be looking into is trying to memorialize some of our processes and procedures for making some of these higher-level HR decisions, so that we maintain stability by having procedures and processes in place that outlive the current iteration of the Board, and acknowledgement of the fact of what Mr. Neiman said, that there is turnover every year.
Yeah, and I'll add one comment to the, especially to the point, you know, regarding, we're not what we used to be fifty years ago. One of the things that we've had an active discussion on is, you know, with the General Manager as the Chief Administrative Officer, is the organization underneath him meeting the business requirements of running the, running the, running the operations of OPA. So the idea is, let's also not look at the higher level, but look at a layer beneath that and understand the lessons learned. You know, is there, should be, should there be labor shift based on the changing dynamics of running the business of Ocean Pines? And I think what's encouraging is, we've had these discussions, right, very preliminary, but we've, we're trying to at least get these ideas out there and these topics so that we can kind of beat them up, see if they, you know, if they're, you know, reasonable, or, you know, again, so we're looking not just at the highest level and say, hey, we're going to hire GM and all our problems go away. No, we, the lesson learned is, we need to go a little bit below and get feedback from the staff. You know, the staff is a very important piece of the input in this whole operation. You know, you guys are there, you have your feet on the street, you're, you're there every day. Make recommendations to the, to the Board, you know, to say, look, here's the observation we've made, maybe an area for consideration going forward, you know? Again, that dialogue, opening that dialogue up. So the takeaway is, yes, we're not just going to go through the motions of putting out an RFP, reading a few resumes, stamping it, and moving on, all right? The idea of a contractual relationship rather than a, you know, employment contract relationship has been discussed as well. No final answers, just the, I want to leave you with the idea that those discussions are ongoing, and we take them very seriously right now.
Thank you. Okay, Steve, I think you are going to do the second emailed question, and that's where we are.
I have my questions with me, so.
I got them.
Thanks, man. Which one am I doing, number two? Okay. Okay, the question was, I'd like to know why assessments are being spent on gussying up the pines while the infrastructure is in need of being taken care of. Mainly, I'm referring to the ditches and easements that need to be cleaned out. My home was on the front page of The Independent last month, and it showed my home surrounded by about three or four inches of water. The permanent residents need to be taken care of before spending our money on things that might attract potential buyers. I'm sure if they knew about this situation, they would have second thoughts. Thank you for your time, seriously, and this is from James Holland. Actually, we have reinstituted the Drainage Committee, and we're working, that committee's working very aggressively right now to really address the drainage issues. I happen to live in, on Burr Hill, and I have waterfront property, but I don't have to pay for the assessment for waterfront property whenever we have a lot of rain. And so we are working on that, and I think that there's a, a good report, several reports that have been done over the years, and that information has been compiled now into a document that, you have a copy of it right there, I think. I'd be glad to share this with you later on, for anybody that's interested on what's been done so far, just to document the history. And then the next step is really to identify, what are the areas where Ocean Pines can, where their own Public Works Department can actually do some things to clean up ditches, cut some brush in some ditches, make access for equipment to get in and do some of the ditches, the bigger ditches along easements? That's one step. Another step is, that we're looking at is the possibility actually of contracting out some of that work. Landscape companies, for example, there's a lot of them that work in the pines. Perhaps we can get a contract with some of them to help supplement rather than put more people on our payroll for cleaning ditches. And then there's some situations where it will require some engineering work to actually look at culvert replacement and other projects where you can't just go in and dig the ditch cleaner and have that solve the problem. So there's, there's several phases to this that we're looking at. I've been working very closely with it. Colby Phillips has been helping to lead that committee and bring people together, and is doing a great job for us as an association to help pull that together. So I think we're making good progress. It probably won't be as fast as what we'd like to see, because these things take time, but we are working on it.
As I just mentioned, if any of you are doing social media and on Facebook, Public Works has a page you can like, that they are putting updates out there now. So, you know, in terms of things that they're working on throughout the pines, it's, it's nice to read. It's been last couple of weeks, they've, they've just started, at least I think that's when I started noticing it. But it's, it's nice to have that information being shared. All right, so we are ready for an audience question. Anybody got something?
Hi, my name's Harry Rutter, 60 Nottingham Lane. Amenities are supposed to add value to the community, that's the basic purpose of them. That doesn't mean they have to make a profit, but it means that they're supposed to be cost beneficial. If you look at something like the, the swimming pools, there aren't many swimming pools around, I don't think there are any other inside swimming pools around. So there, you know, you have a true, unique benefit. I don't know whether they make money on it, but from what I've seen with Colby Phillips, if we ain't, it's not her fault. But then, then there's this, this business, there's two RFPs out right now for the golf course. They total over, the bids back total over $2 million. My question is, the golf course, fifty years ago, it was an advertising gimmick to sell lots in here, okay? Recently, in just the last couple of months, a golf course nearby has closed down. Another golf course nearby has dramatically dropped its dues, or its costs, because golf is, you know, dying. Now, my, my question is, I'm not saying do away with the golf course, but I am saying $2 million on a dying thing doesn't make sense. It's not cost effective. I think what the Board owes the membership is a true cost benefit analysis on golf. And by cost benefit analysis, I don't mean the variant budget where we stick a million dollars in and we only lost 995, so we made $5,000 profit. That's, that's not it. I want a real cost benefit analysis before you spend any more money on RFPs or, and, you know, the fact that the turn grill and bar are not directly related to the golf course. This place is a mile from the golf course. It's got two, three bars, plenty of food, that kind of thing. Why do we need another restaurant, grill, whatever you want to call it, and bar that will then compete with this place? And we own both of them. You know, it's sort of like having two pizza parlors, one, you know, and, and we're running them both a mile from each other and thinking we're going to make money. And again, I'm not talking about profit, but I'm talking about common sense business. You got that space over there, 7,000 square foot base, all for using it, putting a new building up, but not a restaurant and a bar. You know, you've got clubs in here that are dying for space. Make it club space, just make it a 7,000 square foot building with a couple of golf rooms in it, a, a place where people can buy sodas and that kind of thing, and have it where it's set up for the clubs, all the clubs, I don't care who they are. All the clubs can come here, they can have a birthday party for their kids, they can do whatever. But that, that whole place should be set up to be a community thing.
Mr. Rutter.
The golf course does not need another bar. Thank you.
I just want to respond to some of what you said. Just so people understand, we have not made any formal final decision on what we're going to do with those two buildings. We did put out an RFP, we have received bids. Actually, I was in the golf course building on Friday, and we walked through that whole building, and we've identified everything in that building that we could use in a new building. We estimate that's probably upwards of $120,000 just by reusing the, the equipment that's in the kitchen, in the bar, the tap for beer and all that. We actually will be meeting there on Monday with the, the design team that we're talking to before we sign a contract to try to get some hard numbers for what it would cost to do the country club and the cart barn, because they both are in desperate need of replacement in terms of the structures. As far as the country club itself, we're looking right now, if we can, part of what we want to do is use the existing foundation, which is under the, the country club now, which means it would be about an 8,120 square foot building. If we do that, we'd save the cost of putting in a whole new foundation, where actually we'll have a backhoe on site Monday, digging some test bits around so the engineers can look at the foundation to see if it's usable, which will then affect their price for actually designing and building the building, which would be really helpful. The building itself is around 8,000 square feet, as I said, and that is designed to be partly used by golf, and then providing about half of that space for community use when it's not being used by golf for a tournament. One of the things that generates funds in golfing is the tournaments that take place. They're actually fairly profitable to golf operations, and that helps to subsidize the costs of having the country club and the golf course and all that. So the, the design, the way we're looking at it right now would be more like a warming kitchen. It's not a full-blown restaurant by any means. It's a warming kitchen, it provides beverages, and maybe a hamburger, french fries, that kind of thing, but not, nothing like what you have at the yacht club. And then that, that space could be used for a tournament. It's designed to seat about 140 people total, which is what I'm told is, you need to have for a golf tournament to, to cover the participants and providing space and all that for them. So we're looking at this as economically as we can, as community-centric as we can to make sure that we're providing not just golf, but we're providing for the whole community. In my perspective, having that facility there is an asset to our whole community and is a benefit to our values of our properties in the community.
Steve, can I just ask you a question on that? Just with that restaurant and that warming kitchen? It was my understanding there would not be a restaurant, but you did answer that. You said it's a bar and grill. The warming kitchen, because I asked this also. What I was told was that it would be, if needed, to bring food from the yacht club there and be warmed up, so that would be revenue to the yacht club. Is that correct? Is that why we have this warming kitchen?
Yes, my understanding, as we're looking at it right now, would be if it's a catered event, in other words, a full meal like for a tournament, banquet after a golf tournament, that would be catered and it would be brought from the yacht, yacht club, so it's, it's supporting the yacht club business as well as utilizing the space of the country club.
Okay, that takes us to our next. Okay. That takes us to our next emailed in question, and I think Doug, you were going to do that one.
No, this is me. Each waterfront lot in Ocean Pines pays an annual fee of $90 above the amount paid in the annual assessment by non-waterfront lots. This has nothing to do with bulkheads, but it's supposed to be used to benefit waterfront lots by canal dredging, et cetera. Since little or no dredging has taken place for years, where are these funds and how much has been accumulated? So I'll start by saying, I have no idea about a $90 annual fee that's outside of the bulkhead differential. So I am not sure where this, and that, and this is Mr. Marchisello. So I would, I actually want to reach out to him and say, where did you get this number? Because I see no, you know, record of that. There's, there's two fees. There's, well, actually, there's four. There's, you know, bulkhead, non-bulkhead, estate, you know, and, and there's one other fee. But, but again, there's, there's not a $90 fee that's specifically for dredging. So, hold on. So anyway, are, are you?
I suppose the question-
Would you come to the-?
Yeah, could you come to, could you?
Could you?
No, let me, and always comes here, so, so, and unless, and I'll refer to my treasurer, I don't mean to put it on the spot, but I see no accounting of a specific-
I apologize.
Yeah, all right.
The $90 figure came from the OPA administrative office. Every waterfront lot pays 90 more than an inland lot, regardless of bulkhead, bulkhead status. I pay for my own bulkhead, but I pay a higher assessment every year than a lot of block away that is not on the water. Every waterfront lot pays it, whether they have a bulkhead provided by Ocean Pines or whether they install their own bulkhead. Those funds in the past had been segregated and used for the benefit of waterfront lots. Where are the funds now? What are they being used for? And if you're not aware that there was such a charge, then I think you have to look it up before we can even talk about it.
Fair enough, yeah.
You know what? Just real quick, what that is. The Turn's Landing and those townhouses in Mallard pay just, it was 2011, and now it went up whatever ours went up, but they do their own bulkheads. So Turn's Landing does their own. And where he is, in Wood Duck. So maybe that's the-
Yeah, and we pay a fee even though we do our own bulkhead.
Right. So, John, I'd ask for some guidance because I didn't, I saw nothing in the budget that is a separate, you know, pool of funds that were specifically devoted to, to that. So I owe you an answer, but John, if you can help us.
Okay. I've been waiting for a year. I've written the board twice. The Marine Activities Advisory Committee has contacted the board, and I've contacted the finance office three times. On behalf of the Ocean Pines Boat Club, many of our members live on the water and would like to know what's happening.
All right. I'll commit to you in public that I should have an answer for you within the next two weeks. Fair enough?
Okay, thank you.
Are you Mr. Marcel, Marcelo?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So-
Mallard Drive.
I mean, first, like Doug said, we will look into it, but I can tell you, he wanted me to respond as the treasurer. All money that's received and designated for bulkhead is in a reserve account designated bulkhead. To look into what you're saying, I, I have a lot of history on the BNF committee. If anybody knows, and that's in the room, that knows anything about it, if they can talk, but otherwise, I will bring up the BNF to see exactly what it is, along with Doug, to try to get you an answer. But any funds collected by Ocean Pines goes into a bulkhead account for the bulkheads, but we will get back to you on that.
And, and John, to the best of my knowledge, there, there's only one bulkhead reserve account that holds all of that funding?
That is correct, and it's in our financials for everybody to see. It's not bulkhead, then we need to look into it. John, I know you're back there. Do you know anything on this? John?
As far as I know, everything collected in the Ocean Pines Reserve Fund for the bulkheads, which includes any drainage that's there.
Dredging.
That's, dredging or something.
Right. And everything that's non-bulkhead or non-replacement or non-roads is in the operating account, and I've never seen anything designated exactly for that. But we will look into it. It's a good question, and we'll definitely get back to you.
My whole point was, why should certain waterfront lots pay more into the general fund for police and roads?
You got to answer that.
They don't get any additional benefit. What's the description of this?
Well, I, if 3B Mallard, that's one of the, the townhouses, correct?
Correct.
So you pay for your, if the bulkhead needs to be replaced, you pay for it. So it's waterfront, but they pay for their own bulkheads. The same with Turn's Landing. It's, I, I just know that because I sell real estate, and I know the fees are different. So that's, that's, I don't know why. I just know that, that's the case. Elaine?
Yeah, I may just be able to add to that. If I went in Marina, Marina Village. And there really is the same issue with the waterfront, is that our HOA charges us to replace the bulkheads, but those who are on the waterfront also pay that waterfront differential to OPA. So why is Marina Village HOA replacing our bulkheads when that money's are going into OPA bulkhead replacement program? So those kinds of communities are paying twice, and I think that that-
Well, they create their own problem there. Buy their HOA their second one again.
Correct. So that's where I, I think that the issue is, is that there's two payments being made by those waterfront properties in those communities.
You may consider the fact, I haven't heard it said here today, but as far as the bulkhead, they may be referring to the part that everybody pays, except for the ones that have their own bulkhead. In other words, everybody pays for community bulkheads. If there's a bulkhead out here and it's Ocean Pines property, everybody pays. That may be the $90 he's referring to, because I'll guarantee you, I'm paying about $500 extra a year. And that's in addition to the piece that I put in for the common bulkhead. So you may be talking about the common bulkheads, just a thought.
So I do know about the, the common bulkheads is a $19 charge for every homeowner. Okay? That's, that's used for common, that's collected in the, and goes into the, the bulkhead reserve. I just got a text message. Thank goodness for technology here. Colby, Eddie and I are meeting on the dredging this week with Rich Polk, the engineer. So this is a text from Colby. So there's, they're looking at now whether or not that turns into something tangible. At the very least, that discussion has started. All right? So, and we will find out about the, about this, this cost for, you know, the issue ninety for your particular dred-
Okay. So we are ready for another question from the audience. If you want to come on up.
Good morning. My name is Maggie Miller. I live at 15 Winwood Court. My question is kind of a follow up to something that somebody else said about the pools. And first of all, I want to tell Colby that she's doing a great job. However, I have a question for you all as to why we are changing the debit card situation for the pools. It's been for years that you buy debit card, and if you use it, great. And if you don't, well, you can use it the next year. And I'm not quite sure I understand why it's being changed. And secondly, I'd like to ask whether you all have talked to the legal folks about this, because essentially you're taking people's money. It's a debit card. I give you $100, it's my $100 until I use it. And, you know, I'm not sure, I have heard the explanation that you all need to know how much money you're making on the pool, but, you know, if I give you $100, you made $100. So I'm not quite sure I understand. Thank you.
Doug, you want me to start?
Yeah. I was going to say, I got some information for Steve.
Oh, you got information? No, I have it. I did it.
All right. Well, we'll, we'll tag team this one. So anticipating that question, so a couple of things came up. So, so we actually did talk to the attorney, all right? And there's a difference between the terminologies being used. It's, it's not a gift certificate, okay? So it doesn't apply. Maryland law about a four-year expiration for a gift certificate doesn't apply. This is coming right from the attorney. It's actually a discount card, all right? Because you get, there's a discount associated with you putting money on that card. Again, this is like, I'm just reading the legal opinion, okay? Now, and coupon cards can expire. Now, should that have been said when the coupon card was first given out? Yes. All right? So there's an admission of the fact that, that we've got to handle this situation in a particular way. But one of the other things that our director of finance wanted to say, it's not here to just so, so to make the money look good, all right? From an accounting perspective, we can't, you know, we can't do revenue recognition without an associated transaction on the cost side. So always, always says, they're just trying to align, we said, just trying to align our accounting for all our membership cards, and it's the cleanest way to implement this going forward. Okay? So, and they're talking about a reasonable time period. One of the other things, too, is that they looked at each one of the cards, and there's some, there, most people have a reasonable small balance, okay? And, and, and we think it's reasonable to allow them to try to use it before the April of 2020, because it's not this, it's not at this April, it's next April. And there's, and I don't think I'm out of line here by saying this, there's also consideration for those who have a larger balance to actually work one-on-one with that individual to come up with a solution that's fair and equitable. Under no circumstances is OPA going to take the money and say, sorry, you didn't use it by 2020, you're out of luck. Okay? So folks with a fairly significant balance, and they're, and Steve's working on trying to get to those individuals who have a significant balance. What's a significant balance? I don't know. Is $100 a significant balance? You know, or, or 200, you know, or, or is $10 a significant balance? I would think that one could come to some reasonable conclusion, that there's a, there's a number there that makes sense. So, you know, the, the, the message here is that we're every, you know, finance is open to looking at individual cards should, because at the end of the day, we don't want to cause a burden, and nor do we want to either ethically or legally take any money that, you know, that didn't provide a value for the reason you invested it in, in the first place. So, John, anything else?
So, let me just summarize what Doug did and everything. First, yes, the first thing when we did this, I asked Steve, the finance lead, to check with the accounting firm and legal. We did. We got opinions from both. But I want to point out, and you heard Doug said, very important, this board and the management team in there do not want anybody that has these cards to lose money. I just want to make sure everybody's clear with that. And that was never the intent with the year in question. We did finally get the information to see, as, as Doug said, we believe the card usage would be enough. If not, we will address it. The administration building, with Dan's team, will address it. We don't want anybody to lose money on that year. One, one item that came out, as far as communication, somehow, some way, lost in communication, was that we, people thought that the cards expired this April. It's next April. But they will look at them at the time, and they will address it. So nobody, me included, since I know there's a card somewhere in my house with a lot of money on it, will lose money. Believe me, this board and the management team in there doesn't want that to happen. As far as from an accounting standpoint, and I know you heard to make something look good, as somebody, as the treasurer and CFO, I want to make sure for this association that everything is done consistently. That's very important across the board. And by doing this, it's consistent with all other revenue, and we can recognize it. I don't want to get too much into it, but I don't want to see money on the balance sheet that's not recognized as income, which will help us in those years when we do the assessment for the membership. So that is the reason for that. The money was there in the balance sheet, not recognized against the assessment. The cash was there. This way, it's timely and it's recognized. It's the right way to do it. The accounting firm agreed, and it would, it, it's better for us. If it's in that balance sheet, a different board, or a different treasurer, or a different whatever, I can't guarantee what they'll do with that money legitimately. They may allocate it to something else or whatever. So that was the, the rationale behind it. And please, the intent of this board and management, nobody's going to lose money on it. And after being able to see the information the other day, it looks like they will be used, and if not, just want to say it again, the management team and this board will work to make sure nobody on that year loses the money. If anybody has a follow-up question, I, I'd love to answer it, sir.
I have a question out there?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
My name is Charlie Walker, 5 Central Park West, the park at Ocean Pines. I think what this committee and the directors have to answer this morning is, you going to honor the balances on those cards right now? I have about $140, and you're giving me a gibberish answer that, oh, oh, oh. Right now, today, am I going to lose any balance on those cards? It's a yes or no answer?
No.
That's a no?
No, sir. You will not. For this year that we're talking about, I can tell you that this board and the management team is saying, and will make sure nobody loses money with that year. Correct.
So then I can either ask for my cards to be redeemed? That's a yes or no, too?
Not to my knowledge right now.
I have to make a decision about that.
I'm going to say no.
I don't think you can.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to, sir, I'm going to answer it.
I look into it.
Yeah, I'm going to answer it.
Yes or no?
As of now, no.
No.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then I would ask, ask you to remind this. Every year, when I would renew those cards, and it was mainly for my grandkids, they would tell me, the staff of OPA, oh, don't, I would ask, you know, I don't want to put this money on there. Don't worry about it. It'll roll over. I asked that every year, and I've been told the same answer. I brought with me the swim club card and receipts. On these receipts, it says, no expiration. No expiration.
Right.
Now, if you people want to sit there and play Mickey Mouse games and, and, and try to finesse with words what's going on here, then I challenge you. And the challenge is, if you don't stand behind these cards, by the very actions of the staff of OPA, the directors of OPA, and the written statements on these receipts, you have created an implied contract with me that these balances are not going to be lost. And yet you sit there and you say, I have, we have to talk about this. Now's the time to talk. So I take it either by your silence, you do not care?
No, sir.
Or by your silence, you're saying these cards will be honored?
I will answer, of course. And then Doug is the president, you will.
And I, before I want to say-
No one-
I'm hearing impaired, so if I'm hot, if I'm talking loud, I apologize, but I will say this to you. Sitting here, sitting over there, the acoustics in this room are less than acceptable.
I totally agree.
The acoustics at your regular meetings are less than acceptable. And when you, what it sounds like coming from these directors is a lot of gibberish. So answer the question.
Yes, sir.
Will it be honored on infinite item? Yes or no?
Okay, sir. And I agree with you on the acoustics and everything else. Totally agree. No one is going to lose money on that situation that you have spoken about. They will do whatever's possible to make sure at the end of the year, if you or me or anybody else has money left from that year, you can, you can roll it over, whatever. That's what we've been talking about. Nobody will lose the money from that year. There was a change in policy to have expiration dates for the years before that. Like you have those receipts, they are going to honor them. Yes. This board, I know for a fact that they're going to honor it as well as the management team. Yes.
It was said, well, we've got to decide on a dollar amount. The only dollar amount that when this card won't roll is when it's zero. I see no reason for Ocean Pines to take any of my money.
Nobody in Ocean Pines is planning on taking your money, my money, anybody else's money from said year. They will do what's needed at the end. If somebody has a balance, bring it in. They will make sure you don't lose the money that's described on those receipts. I, I honestly, I don't know what else to say.
Take your best guess.
Sir?
Hold on, let's, so let me touch on that. So if I wasn't clear, I apologize. So let me, let me, you talked about a number, okay? You know, if you think about it logically, the idea of trying to get to a certain point by April of 2020, all right? If somebody had $10 on their card, would it be unreasonable to ask them to use that up over the next year? I think it would not be unreasonable for doing that. Let me finish.
I think under the circumstances-
Hold on, let me finish, all right? I gave you time. Please-
That's right.
Respect that as well. If they have $140 on there, it may be based on how you visit the pools, how often you do. It may not be appropriate, or an expectation to have you spend all that $140 by April of 2020. So in that case, we would work on a case-by-case basis to come up with something realistic. Now, what I said, what we had to check on is the different options. For example, and I'm just throwing this out because I'm, you know, we haven't checked this out, but this is the kind of thing you have to check out. Could we take the balance and reduce your assessment? Let's say you had 100 bucks left. So we reduce your assessment by $100. I don't know. Is, can we do it from a policies, policy perspective? Can we do it-
Can we do it from a legal perspective? Don't know. Is there a way we can just roll it over one more time?
Right. Doug, and that's what they're planning on doing, is extending it another year if there's any balance on said years.
Yeah, and that's, so I was getting at it a second.
Balances which would support everything Charlie has.
On a case-by-case basis, we could extend it, okay? But the idea is, and I think the most important point, is you're not going to lose that money, and OPA is not going to take that money and not provide the value for it, okay? That's how we handle it. We've got to drive a stake in the ground somewhere to change the policy from an accounting perspective, all right? But we also recognize that there are extenuating circumstances, such as yourself, that are going to have to be treated on a one, one-on-one basis, and to come up with a solution that's equitable and fair to you.
Thank you. So when I, when I'm leaving this podium, in my simple mind, and a man of maybe limited abilities, I am not going to lose any balances on my card. If we do not use them, then you will offer us some type of refund?
I'm not going that far. I'm saying we'll have to take, because I, I can't say refund yet.
Well, how are you going to give my money back?
So, so, one of the options, and again, we have to check this from a financial accounting perspective and from a legal perspective, it seems to me the simplest one, and this is just me personally, would be to continue to roll it over, okay? Because of a special circumstance. So you would, you wouldn't be able to add any more money to it, but if you still had $100 left on it on April 2020, we would still recognize that, that, that money, all right? That's one of the options, probably the most reasonable one, but I'd want to consult with others to make sure that's the most appropriate.
Okay. That sort of leaves me in the air. All right? Because come April 20th, if I still have my $140, am I going to be faced with someone saying, "Well, you got that credit and you can use it, but we don't know where to use it," or, "We don't think we can refund your $140." You people have not satisfactorily answered that question. Please, I'm talking to board, I don't know what function you serve.
She's the moderator of the meeting, by the way. All right? And we, and we tried to limit this to, to three minutes, but in respect to the importance of the issue, I'll, I'll extend it.
All right, but let me just say this, I'll close. But I'm taking from this meeting that this board of directors and the representatives of Ocean Pines have told me I will not lose the balances on this card.
Correct.
Secondly, in closing, I sent an email to every director prior to this meeting and before this meeting was scheduled on this question, asking for a reply. No one, except one director, took the time to reply to my email. And I'm saying nothing more in that email than I have said now. You want people to be involved in Ocean Pines? Communicate with them. The last thing I'd like to say is I served my country, and in serving that country, I gave you and everybody else in this room the right to express their opinions. I didn't give it to express it in two minutes. If you want to deny me that right, that's guaranteed me under the Constitution of the United States, the First Amendment, and you and you have no right to establish a limit on the amount of time that I have for free speech. Before I leave, any questions, comments from this board?
I want, I want to just make sure it's clear that that card you have there now, going forward, you will not be able to add anything to that card. You can use up the 140. If you don't use it up, the board and the, and the policy and everything that's being established will help resolve that problem for you. But you cannot add to that card going forward. After this policy's put in, policy is put in place, you will buy a card that will have an expiration date on it. I want to make sure the community understands that, because that's important.
So we're going to get new cards, and you're not going to charge us $5 for them?
I don't know anything about that specific step.
And man, you're making a statement, if you don't know what you're saying, please do not say it.
I do know what I'm saying in terms...
You don't. I asked you the question, and we can be paid $5. You don't want to answer it.
I, I...
Any other comments or questions?
I'll answer that, Doug, if you want me to. If the cards need to be rolled over, or something needs to be done, and there is another card that will be issued for it, they will waive the $5.
So we save our money and no additional charges on cards?
For said year, that's correct.
Thank you. Any other questions of me or comments?
I have a comment, sir, Mr. Walker. I have a comment. The practice that the board follows in responding to emails is that one of us will respond to an email, all seven of us don't necessarily do so. We all see the emails, we all see the reply. If the reply that one director provides is satisfactory to the six others, we let it go with that. If it's not satisfactory, one of us or more of us may also reply. So do not expect that you'll get seven replies to your emails.
I think that reply is unacceptable, because I have addressed it correspondence to each of you, and I expect a reply from each of you. You people can't even agree on basics, and you tell me you're going to agree to my, one of you answering my email, speaking for all of you? Man, that's totally unacceptable, and that's one of the basic problems at Ocean Pines. I correspond with each of you, I expect a reply from each of you. All right? So I think your, your, your explanation is totally lacking. Anything else you would like for me?
Okay, um, we...
Just a comment here.
Sir, we're done there.
I got something to say, okay, about this, this fellow. Ten years ago, I have fight, you wrong, I have fight with Chris Lars when he was on the board. We had at that time three minutes to speak up. I fight it that we could speak five minutes. I don't want you to cut that five minutes back on the people.
Uh, just, just as a...
The board, the board voted on that. We got the right to speak at least five minutes.
Sir, this meeting is actually a communications committee-run event. We didn't have anything to do with that. We did that to prevent...
He said it, he said it, three minutes.
For this meeting, which is a meeting of the communications committee.
If you say it, bro, three minutes, it'll be hard to now.
Go ahead, sir. It's someone else's turn. You.
I was just going to respond to the problem here on the cards. Dick Neiman again, I'm sorry, I exceeded my time immensely. I, from a cash management standpoint, I cannot figure out why somebody wouldn't take the money and hold it as a liability. It's called what the banks do. But regardless, if you guys don't want to be a bank, and you don't want to offer discount on swim and racket, why don't you just say at point in time, maybe it's April 30th, 2020, "I'm going to refund the balance." These people would all shut up. I mean, it would just be that simple, i- if that's the case. I still don't understand, my, my information on cash management was, you take the money whenever you can get it, and you don't put it out until you have to. But if it's going to fix the accounting here, I don't know how many thousands of dollars we're talking about, it could be 7,000, it could be 700,000, I don't know how much it distorts your balance sheet. All I know is it equals zero on the balance sheet, cash liability. But just tell them you're going to give them a refund, and if that's a problem, I'm sorry, you guys caused it, whoever made the new policy. Thank you very much.
Let's do one of the emailed-in questions. Steve, you are going to do number five.
Okay, this question is related to, um, why do we need a new building to house golf carts? Shouldn't we be seeking more ways to get out of debt instead of seeking new ways to spend money? Um, actually, the, the golf cart barn is in very, very bad shape. I was walking through it again on Friday for the third or fourth time. It needs a, a lot of work, the cost to maintain it is more expensive the way it is, and so we really do need a new cart barn. That money to pay for that comes from replacement reserves. It is not coming out of your annual assessment, so I just want to make sure you understand that. I still don't want to spend money if we don't have to, but it does need to be repaired, and that's why we're taking that approach.
Done. Come on.
I'm here to address the, to say thank you for finally coming to a budget. Thank you, I now know what I'm going to spend. Uh, the other thing is, I'd like you to really, as a board, consider, and I think maybe all of us would, the idea of hurrying, rushing to pick another, yet another general manager. I've been here three, three years. I think it's an excellent idea to support the local person we have in place here in the Pines, who did an excellent job turning around her department. She handled her people well, there's been no problem, there's been no deficit, okay? And it's spread out. Plus, from what I have heard at other meetings, and also in the reports from all of you, that she's a pleasure to work with. There has been, per the driveway papers, already concern within the board of how you were handling talking to the different departments. Summer's coming, the new budget is in place. We would, if you rush to pick someone, it might not be what we actually need, we'll be here again, spending money to say thank you to someone as a short-term hire. I see, I would like the board at their special meeting today to give serious consideration in behalf of all of us out here to place that position with her for six months. Six months, okay? Where she would have the authority to work with all of you as you handle and work your way through what's happening with the different departmental problems. She will be able to see if we get hit by a freight train. She will be able to see problems coming and go to all of you and address them before we're in emergency mode. And when you meet, I believe that's what your special meeting is about today, we're not saying, "Don't hire someone," we're not saying, "Don't do the search mode," we're just saying, "Let's not run out and hire someone in an instant, it still might not be the right fit." Plus, you're also facing the fact that three members on the board are going for election, you're going to have that. You've got summer coming. If she makes it through six months, she will, and you have taken six months in this search to find someone and get them to relocate here, which is all part of that package, they'll be in a position to come in when the next budget's being formed, she'll be in a position to tell you all what she saw, she'll be able to be in a position where, in an informed, educated position. I'm sometimes at a loss to feel that we have to run out of here all the time, in the three years I've been here, to get general managers who don't understand the Eastern Shore philosophy whatsoever. As a real estate agent, you know, that's a whole different world. And, and I think if you gave it to her officially, not with a little note that says she can do it, because officially, she'll be able to work with you in an official position, and be able to, her, her decisions will carry weight. Not telling her to avoid the board, I'm not telling you to avoid her, but it will create the legal, under the Homeowners Association, ability for her to function. Other than that, everybody's going to be saying, "Mother, may I?" Even board members. It'll be, "Can I do this? Can I do that? Should I do this? Who do I talk to about that?" When you have your meeting today, consider that, because now you can take your time, you can do more research. You've got a lot going on, these, some of these changes, you've already got bulkhead problems, you've got pool problems, you've got, you've got card problems, you've got all of that going on. Maybe just think about it and decide, you're not giving it to her as a life position, six months. And that way, she can work with authority, and she's got a proven, proven track record. Maybe a lot of people in the Pines don't know of her, but again, she's the only non, basically, unless I missed something, non-deficit department in the Pines that we've had. So when you meet today, please consider, along with everything else you've heard here today, she could tell you what's coming, she could warn you, she's been here long enough to see, and people trust her enough to tell her, rather than when we all of a sudden have to throw money into a bucket. Um, I, by the way, I'm Paula Gray at 88 Windjammer. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Um, okay, we'll do the next...
Can I, can I just answer Paula?
Absolutely.
So Paula, first of all, thank you very much. I know you saw me in, in the yacht club a week or two ago, and you told me everything you said today. It's good to hear, to have everybody else hear it. I've worked with Kobe over the last several years in more capacities than the board. I believe she's a very highly valued member of the Ocean Pines staff, and certainly somebody with a lot of qualifications to do what you're saying. I was part of the review committee two years ago, whatever it was, whether it was six or seven people we interviewed, I have told the board and I have stated that if Kobe was one of those six or seven, she would be right up there at the top, in my opinion.
Well, one other, one last thing that I forgot to mention, is that she also brings a younger perspective. And if we saw what happened with our survey, and everyone over the age of, we have, got no response from, almost negligible response, from people under the age of 40, she brings a fresher and newer perspective, not to, not to change anything, not to sell the property, whatever, but a different perspective that might be more respected when she presents things than having everyone look like me with gray hair.
Let me just add, Paula, thank you. Um, you know, one of the things that we've been, one of the things we've been doing over the last several weeks has been the transition management team. In my role on that team, I've been working very closely with Kobe in public works especially, and, um, I have seen her skills and her gifts and her abilities, and I am very impressed. And she does, she does care about Ocean Pines. There's one, one real asset there, when you have someone who's within the community and understands the community, that's very important. So we are looking at that. We're, we're not making a rush into finding another general manager. We want to look at all the different options and figure out what's best for the association. But we are, through this transition management team, all of the board members are working very closely with different departments in the association, which is really helping us to understand the association and the needs, as well as to look at the talent that we have already onboard in the association that can help us to make better choices going forward.
I just, I, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to add that I know that the membership in the last election voted into office a number of people who ran on a platform of running this place like a business. The HR functions are also a big part of the business function, and I think it's very important for all of us to realize that we need to make our HR decisions, certainly at the top of our organization, but all the way down, using best business practices. And that means, as Director Tuttle pointed out, we look at all options. That's what we owe you as the membership, for us to do this in a businesslike way.
To be discussed at another time, HR should be local. HR should not be an attorney, HR should be local, and should represent the people that are employed here, to give them a voice with, and also to have a job description, you can't hope, but that's a whole other talk. We'll see you next month.
Okay. I, Doug, may I? Um, the gentleman that spoke on the bulkheads, I forget your name, I'm sorry, Joe?
John.
John?
Richard.
Richard, Richard, I apologize, they're telling me John, I apologize. So, and we did have the question about the laptops or whatever, and, and wondering what I use it for, when there are questions like that, and I do have friends or, or members of BNF like John, and, and another person that's been here for 30, 40 years more, who's actually given me some information to answer your question. So we are working on it, we will get you something. It's along the lines of what I expected. Uh, but let me just formalize it with them and talk to BNF, and we'll get back to you. But we will get you a question, I'm actually getting some information to address it now. Okay? Fair enough, yeah?
Okay.
Yeah, I'll, I'll pass on my comment.
Did you, you're not, actually, it's your turn. We, we're looking at number six of the emailed-in questions now.
All right, this one was mailed in from Beverly Bromley Meadows. Dear Board, I have asked this question twice now and not received a response. Do you ever intend to set the record straight about the missing funds in Ocean Pines? Do you want to continue having everyone believe it was an employee in the finance department that took the funds despite the evidence that it was not? I look forward to seeing you on Saturday at the town hall meeting. Well, as mentioned earlier, the reason we didn't get a response is that we are not actively involved as board members in this WCBI investigation and the forensic audit, so we obviously can't comment on that. We'd already talked about, uh, the, uh, the process, and that the information will, is targeted to be available by the end of April. And until then, it would be, I'd be remiss if I made any comments that, you know, insinuated anything other than we're going to get a report, uh, at the end of April.
Next question will be from the audience, is anyone, go ahead.
I want to talk first about Mrs. Colly, Colly is her name? The lady was going to take over.
Kobe.
Kobe. I went to Mrs. Kobe, unfortunately, she wasn't in meeting, and last month, oh, yeah, last month, I talked about the ditch next to my house, I had my garage floor. Mrs. Kobe called me three times back. So it shows me that she is interested in what goes on in Ocean Pine. Unfortunately, I had not the opportunity to meet her, but she sent the guy from Public Works over, and they cleaned some stuff out, but the ditch is not clean. But, yes, I would recommend her, too. And the other thing what is bothering me, uh... And the other thing what is bothering me, Tom over there talked about the golf course, a new building. You talked about the new building for the ladies from the club, what sells stuff. We won .6 million dollars in the hole. Let me be plain. If your wife says to you, "Honey, we need new furniture in the house," but the next day you got a hole in the roof, and a water runs in it, what are you gonna do? You're gonna fix first the roof. Because here too, we won .6 million dollars in the hole, and we keep building and building. Put that money toward debt. I've been here 30 years, and I have told you that before. I keep a record. When I moved it in, and my wife was alive, I paid all the bills in the house, was $2,500. Last year was $9,000. My dues went up from $300 to $1,000. My house, taxes went up $1,500, and keep talking. And you people have to stop till we get out the debt. And I wanted to say another one time more. After Tom Terry was president, and Bob Thompson then built this room, this building, Ocean Pine went down. They have lied to us, and if you lie, then lie. That's all they have done here. That's all I have to say.
Okay, let's do our last emailed-in question, which I think, Doug, you have that one too.
And interestingly enough, this one will be easy because we've already talked about it. Betsy Stauffer, please explain the rationale for changing the Ocean Pines pool access card from no expiration to annual expiration. Perhaps a change of this magnitude should be placed out to resident vote. This appears yet another move to dissatisfy residents, many of which are senior citizens and part-time homeowners in the Ocean Pines community. So I just wanted to recognize that the question was submitted, and I think based on discussions from, you know, the past 45 minutes, that we've touched on that topic already.
Okay. That is all of the questions that were sent in. Are there any other questions from the audience? Yes.
Hi, my name is Pat Hall, six Avon Court. Just a couple comments. The golf course, we moved here 30 years ago also, Dutch. And when this place was built in the 70s, there may be three golf courses in the area, now there are 30. Do we really need to appropriate millions each time? It's millions of dollars for the drainage, the irrigation. Every time I hear of the golf course repairs, it's a couple million. I'm just wondering, when do you reach the maximum? And how many people really belong to the golf club that live in Ocean Pines? From what I gather, it's just a few hundred people, if that. The other thing was cleaning out the ditches. The last time our ditch was cleaned out, they cut all the cables in the ditch. MediaCom came out and had the biggest laugh of their life. So just be aware that that's a possibility. You know, you don't come in with a bulldozer and just scoop. We were without cable for about a week, so, you know, hopefully things will be different. Thank you.
Actually, you might find this report interesting because it actually has some pictures of things of that very nature. So look through the janitors' board, you might find this very interesting.
Well, I hope you have a different crew this time, cleaning out the ditches. Thank you.
That would be nice.
Is there anyone else that would like to come up with a question? Going once, going twice?
Can I make a comment?
Not quite. Okay.
My name's David Manning, I live at 101 Mumpsford. I'd just like, it isn't on, or what?
Get close to it.
All right.
There you go.
I don't like to put my face that close to something. I'd just like to appreciate all your time. I know you guys donate or whatever, and you hear a lot of aggravation and all that. I think we're not as bad off as, I don't know, little pet peeves or whatever. And I think, you know, historically, I mean, we're living under something, 10 inches excess rain. I don't think the culvert problem is that crucial. And I think people that live, they're, I mean, have you determined who's responsible for the culverts in front of said lots or whatever? Only the community areas you guys should be required. And yeah, you gotta get an engineer to figure that out and all. And it's on paper already, it shouldn't be that hard. I mean, the golf carts, I don't know, wasn't that part of that engineering thing anyhow with that? The pool house? The golf cart barn, or whatever you call it, you said that's another thing then they gotta explore?
No, that's done already.
Because that's, well, it's in the same location, correct?
Well, it's adjacent to the country club.
But that's not part of the golf reparations or whatever to fix it and all that? The $2 million?
It's not $2 million, but anyway, yes. The two buildings are under plan to be renovated, or replaced, I mean. Two buildings.
Now, I think you probably got knowledge in people within that are probably willing to donate time and some other stuff. I don't know who Colby is, she's an employee for Ocean Pines?
Correct.
And she's supplementing as the, whatever she's not? So do we need one even?
Say again, please?
Do we even need one? Whatever the guy who left, the two pitiful after Thompson?
I'll make a comment on that.
Yeah?
From two perspectives. Number one, from our bylaws, all right? If you read section 9.06, it says the board may appoint a GM if the GM is unavailable for 15 days or more. It doesn't require us to do it, it says we may do it, okay? There's also a section in the bylaws, 513G, I think it is, it says, in essence, and I'm paraphrasing here, that the board can take actions that are deemed necessary and beneficial to support the association. Okay? So we can look at it from that perspective, and it says, you know, do we have to appoint a GM? Well, it's probably prudent, but there's no legal requirement. So anybody that comes and says you must appoint a GM based on our government's documents is incorrect. But, you know, we certainly want to work to that end. Now, to Paula's point, that, you know, are we rushing to get someone in place permanently? No, I think the lesson learned is to take another look at that and understand what's working, you know, and what didn't work, and factor that into the search. The final point is, as of right now, and this is directly to your point about should somebody work, my personal opinion, we collectively put the transition management team in place, all right? And what that did is it took the GM out of the equation, and it allowed John Malinowski as Director of Golf, Chief Massey as the head of the Police Department, Colby Phillips as the Director of Aquatics, and Steve Phillips as Director of Finance, manage the environment at a level below the GM, okay? What's that, what that has done in the past 30 days has produced results. Things like, Dutch said he got a call from Colby. Public Works is on top of things now. Whatever, and I can't put my finger on it, but whatever communication channel that might have been clogged up has been relieved. And we're seeing tangible results. So one could argue that if we put somebody in there, is it a benefit or not? I don't know. It would be a nice, interesting discussion. You can speculate, you know, you can kind of, you know, maybe, you know, pros and cons of it, but what we have right now is tangible evidence that this temporary situation, let me point out the word temporary, because that's what it is, has been producing the kind of results we had hoped it was, okay? We'd love to be able to sustain that, but again, our responsibility is to make sure that we do apply all the requirements of our governing documents, and that is, we do need to have a GM at some point. So I hope that answered your question, because let me, directly, you said, "Do we really even need a GM?"
It's kind of abstract still.
Well, you know, it's, yeah, it's an abstract answer, but again, we have tangible evidence this time, so.
And going forwards, or whatever. Because common sense and logic, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
That's okay.
I just don't like to waste time on words and bull, and I don't know, a lot of that's what I heard here today. No answers really got answered, or whatever. You know, it's the same redundant BS. I think least common denominator, common sense and logic needs to take effect in this community. And people should unite and work together and not fight each other. And another thing with that peer, I think, is an HOA thing, an individual one outside of Ocean Pines, and they're all throughout this place, and they're just redundant. They need to just concede and allow OP to do it. And you wouldn't have that $90 thing, I'm sure.
Bob, did you have a question?
Was there another?
Yeah.
You want me to come in?
Bob Wheatley, 36 Carriage Lane. First, I want to thank everybody here in the board for volunteering to help lead the community, so thank you very much. And you sit up here and you take a lot of grief, and I appreciate your responses. To the gentleman as passionate as he's been about the cards, I appreciate that as well. One thing I wanted to first mention, Community Center, this building here, the barn, the golf cart barn, every time we've had to replace it is because it's beyond repair. What are the plans in place to keep things in repair moving forward? There's buildings hundreds of years old. Go to Europe, there's thousands year old. What are we doing to repair things so I don't keep hearing the same, "It's beyond repair"? Thank you.
I can touch on, Steve, later.
Okay, just to touch on that, and I want to make another comment about something unrelated. But one of the things that I think we're seeing with the transition management team is that Public Works is really addressing what has often been referred to in these meetings as deferred maintenance. And I think inappropriately, from my perspective, and this is just me as an individual, when you try to keep assessments low at the expense of doing maintenance of your property, you're paying a price for that down the road. And that's part of what we saw this year in going through the budget. Now, the other thing I just want to mention, on the easel back there, there is a display of the proposal that the Maryland Department of Transportation is working on for the Northgate area. What they're proposing, and this is concept only right now, so don't run out and say they're gonna build a traffic circle there, because that's not done yet, but that is what they're proposing right now. And they, one of the issues related to that, which they have asked for Ocean Pines to respond to, is would we be willing to give them, give them, hear me say that, a certain portion of land on either side of 589, on either side of our exit from the North Gate? It's not very much land, but in order for them to do what's on that board over there, they would need us to give them, it's probably about three tenths of an acre on each side of the bridge along 589. It's not a lot of land, we're in conversations with them, we're looking at all kinds of options, possibly even abandoning the bridge and putting in culverts and making it look like a bridge, but not have that little cabin in the middle or that little building, simplify maintenance, simplify egress in and out of the North Gate. Right now, as you know, when you come up to that light in the summertime especially, you can sit there for quite a while. If we can widen those lanes approaching the bridge a little bit, and then so you have that circle, people will be able to turn right without stopping at the light at all. They go around the circle if they want to go on 589 down towards the medical center. So that's what we're in conversation with, with Department of Transportation. It's a couple years away at least. They don't have funding for it yet, but they're trying to get some of their pieces in place to be able to move forward with the design.
Yeah, and to add on to that, you know, Steve and I went over there and met with the folks in Salisbury. And so it's important to note that, again, concept only, they don't have the funding yet. A part of the process for them to request the funding is to be able to secure the land that can be donated by Ocean Pines in order to help the project along. Right across the street from 589, if you look at the drawing, the open field, that's Mr. and Mrs. Ayers, they have already donated the required land on their side of 589 for the project to happen. I'm told, and I'm gonna, I'll tell myself because I'm gonna get part of this wrong, I don't know that we really have any choice, you can't offer fair market value. In other words, you can't sell the land to anybody, okay? The state can claim eminent domain and, what's it, condemnation, I think, is the term they use, and so they can just take it, all right? So it's not like we have a choice, but one of the things we were thinking about is, how can we partner with MDOT and the State Highway Administration to say, "Hey, when you guys start to do that, and we start thinking about potential changes to the North Gate," as Steve had mentioned, "Perhaps we don't put a bridge in there, we certainly want to get a second lane, especially for people that are turning, you know, the other way on 589 to help alleviate that traffic problem. Maybe we can gain some economies of scale when the construction team that's building the roundabout comes in, we also partner with them, and at the same time, if we can coordinate it properly, work on any changes that have to happen at the North Gate." So I'd rather establish a relationship with MDOT by saying that, you know, in concept and legally, we have a right, we can donate the land to them. And again, as Steve said, it's like three, almost four tenths of an acre on either side, and just make it happen. And then I think it provides us an opportunity in the long run, should they get funding to do this, to work with them, and again, be mutually beneficial. So that's, those talks are ongoing, and we'll keep people abreast as things develop.
Okay, sounds like that, that's it for today, unless, okay.
Actually, I just want to ask a question, Doug. Actually, I have a question for everybody that showed up today. So whether you have a, whether you have a pool card or not, everybody heard the answers, the policy from this table today, and why we did it, and the fact that no one would lose money on said year. Does anybody here feel that they will lose money on that year? Please raise your hand if you do. Even with everything we've said, sir, ma'am? Yes?
I just have one comment.
Sure, absolutely, because I don't want that.
When we first moved here, we had lots of money. And now we don't. So when I bought my hangtag for over at the pool at the beach, I bought a song, let me get that card. Well, for the first year, we had used $1 of it. The second year, I did $125 again. Lady goes, "Oh, my goodness, you've got a lot." The last year, my baby, $30, because it was my birthday, a big company. I've got like $200 and some dollars. We'll never use that before 20 God knows what.
Right.
My grandchildren aren't even adults. They're little. The two little ones going to my pay, the others pay as kids. And I think for us, it would be awful, and I would go and do that to someone.
Okay, so I see your point. So you're saying, hey, I may not ever, ever use that money, and then you would be afraid, okay, we can address that.
See, now, if you choose, when I go buy the hangtag this year, I'm not gonna buy the whole deal, because it was a good value. But I don't need it.
I understand.
I'll buy the hanggar, but I won't buy the extra, which I thought was fabulous, you know, but I do that now.
So, and believe me, this is, because I want to understand this, and I will make recommendations as the finance person to the board and to management on what the cost or whatever is. But even with that, even if they give you an extended card, you feel you still might lose it? Is that what you're saying?
It was extended for a long time. We could use it eventually.
Right.
But I can't use it in the next two years.
Okay.
There's no rate in the world.
Okay.
I've got two grandchildren that are gonna come down here, not drive, they're on the beach, on the road without anybody, nobody's gonna come.
Okay.
You know what I mean? And I'm sitting there like...
I understand. And I'm glad, and I'm glad I asked this question. I can tell you the board is, I can hear it right here, that they're gonna make sure that that doesn't happen. You see them nodding their heads. Anybody else, please, any input I get on this would be important. I don't want anybody leaving here thinking that they're gonna lose money on this, sir.
Well, I wouldn't say it.
Please come up to the mic, I can't hear you. No, it's okay. Any feedback so we can make sure this is right?
You know, when utilities owe me money, they credit it back. Just recently, I got a credit to a credit card that was expired, as a matter of fact. But I would imagine a lot of people in this day and age probably charged all this. It can't be that difficult to refund based on the credit card. And let it clear out what it can till the end of next year, and just refund the balance on the credit cards. Anybody else that comes up, you may have a cash issue for a short time saying, "Here's your money, here's your money," if they paid cash. I think you should look at it, I would also personally like to know how much money we talking about in escrow right now, in our, what is our liability right now in these cards? Do you know?
Right. We actually did, that's what they mentioned, that our finance leader's working up, he was working up this year, did he put a number in there? 30?
70, 80,000.
Yeah.
That's sizable.
The 70,000 was the number, or 65,000 was the number I used back in whatever it was, September, October, when we talked about that. So that money, that taking out his income actually helped us with the assessment this year. I still think we can make this right if we, as I heard Doug saying, I've heard the management team, Colby and everything, we can look at this on an individual basis to make sure everybody's satisfied.
Well, I'm still confused, myself, counting background, that we're accounting cash taken in as revenue when we, when it's not.
Right.
I mean, you know it's a liability.
Right.
Until such time as we earn it.
Right.
I assume we're still on a cruel basis in Ocean Pines, okay?
We are cruel basis. We did record income in different ways, we tried to make it consistent. You know, I'm trying to get a lot of input here so I can make sure the board has any financial numbers they need, or the management team, so they can make decisions, to make sure nobody loses money.
I've only heard two reasons today. One says we don't want to offer discount anymore, and the other one is it'll make our accounting system easier. our accounting system easier, and, and you won't confuse cash with revenue." That's what I've heard today, and I mean, that's your prerogative. I don't have a problem with it. I just don't understand why refunds, be it, you know, or you could use your card for two more years, whatever you want to do, it's gonna go down as you go.
Right, exactly, and that's what I'm trying, I was trying to see how much it went down.
And see how many of them were charges. I mean, it can't be that hard to sit there on a, on a card machine and process, process. Now, you may have forty thousand people, all have two, two dollars on their card, I don't know. Thank you very much again.
Right. Now, they, I, I can hear them next to me, they, they are addressing it, they don't want anybody in any particular situation lose money from said year. And, and we will work with it, and finance will give them the numbers they need to make their decisions.
Just for your information, you know, the Ocean Pines Forum put out the wrong date.
Right, that was part of, yeah, and, and-
And I think that caused a lot, it, Doug, it caused me a little consternation, but I called your front desk, and they said, "No, that's wrong." So thank you.
I understand. Please, I, I, I know this board, I, I've spoken to them, they do not want anybody to lose money on this.
One-third of it will change, though, again, don't forget.
That is a point. That is a point. Now, I, I really believe nobody wants it. Anybody else, something new that I, that, so that I can understand what points, so that we can give them the information?
I'm not on the cards.
Sir? I think, I think that you have to go to the, the mic.
I can't understand a word you're saying.
Okay.
But the question, when are we gonna take comments on the circle?
The circle. Okay, so he's changing.
Are we up to that point yet?
I, I, I didn't know there were any more comments on it, I don't think, there's enough, it's not-
I said that, that's why I first questioned.
Oh, so we, I totally agree, I totally agree.
Comment.
Excuse me, sorry, are you talking about the proposed traffic circle at five eighty-nine?
That proposal.
Yeah. If you've got questions, by all means, send them forward, one of the things-
Bring them forward, man.
Yeah, if you want to write it out for me, what I, what-
Then I can get up and speak.
You don't have to get up and speak.
I just, I mean, so in the interest of, of time, and, and so that, that we're wasting time or anything, but, you know, we've, we've presented all the information we have at this point, so if you ask a question, there's probably a very good chance that we won't have the information to answer you. It's a concept phase, and I've given you everything that we have to date, okay?
I would like to specifically address that circle concept. All right? I lived in Martin Cherry Hill area, South Jersey, all right? Lived there for a while. Twice a day, I would have to go around the infamous Route Thirty-Eight Circle.
I know where it is.
You're smiling?
I know where it is.
You know what the Martin Circle was like?
I know.
And you know what the Berlin Circle was like, and God forbid, you knew what the racetrack circle was, correct?
I know the racetrack.
That was an impossible task to get around those circles. You know, I traveled them twice a day, and come tourist season and, and the beach season for South Jersey, it was impossible. You just had to pull out and go around. I lived in Philadelphia. You have the Oxford Circle, and you had the Nazareth Circle. I believe they've done, I know they've done away with the Nazareth Circle. The circles in New Jersey have been eliminated because of the chaos they caused. I lived in the Chicago area, and some of you might be familiar with the town of Naperville, all right? Was tech center of Illinois, right? We had a community where they put a circle like that right in the neighborhood. Chaos. Do you think that's going to solve the problem on Racetrack Road in the summertime? You will not be able to get in, out, or around that circle. That's my comment. And I would hope that this Board of Directors doesn't allow themselves to be bullied by the county or the state. That will not work.
Do you agree with your last?
Well, I understand we have no jurisdiction in this, all right? This is a state issue, all right?
But you can strongly object.
We can, we can note things, but as I stated earlier, I'd rather partner with them to, again, any potential benefit that goes out there. Again, eminent domain, this is a state issue. It's not an Ocean Pines issue, it's not a county issue, it is a state issue, okay? We don't have any authority, nor do we have any leverage, okay?
Let me, let me explain something to you. I don't want to continue this. I come from the Chicago area before I came here. This is my eighth home. I've been conned by the best people. They're in Chicago. All right?
Would agree.
Let me explain something to you. There's over forty-one aldermen in Chicago who are doing, who have or will be doing time in federal jails. There are three or four congressmen from the Chicago area that have gone to jail. And there are four governors that have gone to jail time. So I would say to you, I've been conned by the best, but I will give you credit. You're right up there with them. Thank you. Please do not continue this.
Let me, let me just say something related to the-
I'm above any of them.
The circle. If any of you have comments, I did agree with the Department of Transportation, if you wanted to submit comments to us, send them to me by email. I will compile them and make sure they get into the engineer that's responsible for this design. So we're more than willing to hear comments. We can't answer most of the questions because it's not our project, but we're very willing to provide that information to the state.
Cheryl Jacobs, Twelve Twenty-three Carrollton Lane. I just want to give you a little bit of history on how this came about, and that is because when PRMC purchased the land where they have now built several buildings and continue to build, which are a huge asset to the Ocean Pines community, we were approached and asked to give up land to have them have the opportunity to have a different exit. And there was a great deal of turmoil in the community, and we did what we thought was best for the community, and we said, "No, you can't do that. We don't want that traffic coming in, that would create a terrible mess on the bridge." People from other areas, I have to laugh when they say, "Oh, my God, we have to wait for two lights to get out of the North Gate." I mean, please, people. This is the state's answer to fix the problem that was created. Now, should the builder have taken care of this issue before he bought that land and built this complex? Yes. But here we are, and this is the state's answer to try to fix the problem, because anybody that uses that facility, when you come out of there, you can't go left, okay? You gotta go right. And what does that mean if you really wanted to go left? Well, this is the answer to allow that in the best way possible to happen. The only other comment I have is, Doug is absolutely correct, with eminent domain, we might not have a choice, they may just take our land, but can we just give them an easement so that we retain ownership? It's just another thing that I'm sure our attorneys will, will discuss ultimately, but folks, this is the answer to not giving up our land originally and having them come through the community and then create a tremendous bottleneck at the North Gate for people coming out of that. Thanks.
Yes?
I just want to take exception. Paula, would you let me have my comment first?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
I just want to take exception to the gentleman who is insinuating that we're conning the members. The definition of con is to swindle, defraud, fleece, squeeze. We are volunteers. We're here working for no compensation, putting in countless hours, trying to come to the best decisions that benefit the membership as a whole. None of us benefits personally by the decisions that we make. So I think by calling our decisions and our approach to our decisions, a con job is a misuse of the term.
First of all, I want to thank Mr. Parks for acknowledging the big improvement that has occurred, because I think we've noticed it out here. I, I operate in a lot of worlds out here, and believe me, I've heard good things. My only concern about making sure that we have an in-place acting with authority general manager is this. You're going into an election, and right now, you're all getting along. You have three active board members that are gonna be running, to come back to the board or to be reelected. All this, all this interaction up here might get bogged down once they start to compete for positions, and that's what we don't want to lose. So if you have a general manager acting, they can step in, and if they feel that you're, that, Mr. Tuttle, that you aren't doing your duty, this acting general manager cannot officiate in your behalf, but can make sure that it stays on that nice even flow. It's not, and I'm not saying rush, but six months to fill a job that pays that much money,